Work session of the common council to order, may we have roll call, please?
Mayor Gates.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miles.
Here.
Councilmember Cruss.
Here.
Councilmember Lingenfelter.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
She's here.
Councilmember Wade.
Here.
And Councilmember Yocum.
Good afternoon.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. All work session items listed are for discussion only, no action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of the work session meetings is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on the agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. Item one, water rate study results and recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor Gates, members of council, good evening. The first item tonight is to have staff and our rate consultants report on the rate study that's been underway for the entire time that I've been interim city manager. And they're ready to outline their findings and make their recommendations to you. So here's Tina Moline, the city's finance director, to begin the presentation. Tina?
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. You may recall that in last year's budget work sessions, we talked about the water system and its financial sustainability, or really the lack of the financial sustainability. We talked about how we had began to tap into our cash reserves to fund the operations, and that we were unable to completely fund our five-year capital improvement program. So you had approved a water rate study for us to, for it to be performed this fiscal year, and we have hired Wildin Financial Services to do so. The primary objective of the water rate study was to address the financial sustainability of the system, but then another component of it was to look at the water rate conservation. And if there was a way for us to look at our existing tier structure and tighten some of those thresholds to encourage users to use less water. And so Wildin and city staff were able to work together and come up with some options to bring to the table for you to review this evening. The Wildin project team consists of Pat Walker and Kevin Burnett, both who have City of Kingman experience. Kevin was actually part of the project team who worked on our 2008 water rate study. And Pat, we hired in 2016 to help us develop the fiscal year 17 budget. So they're both very familiar with the City of Kingman's operations. With that, I will ask Pat, who I believe is going to be presenting first, to come up and, and begin the presentation. Tonight, staff is not providing a recommendation. What we're really requesting from council is direction on whether or not the options that are being presented this evening are viable ones and that we can take to the community and meet with different sectors. If they are not, and if you want us to bring back something different, then we would like direction for that as well. So with that, I'll hand it over to Pat. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Yes.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to present this information to you. As Tina said, we've been working on this for quite a few months in conjunction with the city staff. And I'd like to just start out by kind of talking about what the presentation's all about tonight. As Tina said, there is no action, of course, this is a work session. And we're going to be talking about the purpose of a rate study, why do you do a rate study? We're going to talk about the proposed revenue increases, and I'll go into a little bit more detail about the difference between a revenue increase and a rate increase. We're going to talk about a financial plan summary, the proposed rates, and then give you some comparisons. So the purpose of a rate study is to determine how much money or how much revenue do you need to bring in to pay your operation costs, your capital costs, not only for the next year, but for the next five years? And be able to develop minimum reserve levels, meaning it can be referred to as a contingency reserve, but it's an amount that you set aside in the event that there's a revenue shortfall or unanticipated expenditure. And you want to be able to develop rates which is going to generate that sufficient revenue over the next five years to cover all those costs. And the other policy that the city wanted to make sure that we, we remembered, and when we were doing the rate study, was encourage conservation. Because in the long term, conserving conservation is going to help with having to pay for expansions and other costs associated with groundwater and everything else. So it is something to encourage. The best way that I like to explain a rate study, it's really kind of broken out into three components. The first component is what we call a financial plan. And a financial plan tells you what, what you need, what revenues you need to pay for the cost of your system. So that's what we're going to see on a revenue increase. The next phase is what we call cost of service. And that determines who should pay for it. In other words, what customer class, whether it be commercial, non-residential versus residential. Then the last piece is, who's going to, how are you going to collect it? You're going to collect it through rates, you're going to do it through base fees and through tier structures. So there's three things that we looked at throughout this study. And as I mentioned, the consultant team did work with the city staff, you had your city engineer, your public work staff, you had your engineering consultants. We all worked together and bringing this all together determined what the operation and maintenance costs were and the capital needs that you will need moving forward. Oops, gone the wrong way. One thing that I really like to make clear in any of our presentations is that there's a big difference between a revenue and a rate increase. A revenue increase is saying, okay, these are all my expenditures, and here's how much money I have coming in. And that gap between might be a 2% or 3% that I need to raise rates overall in order to generate the amount of revenue that you need. A rate increase is looking at the different tiers and the base fees. And the rate increase might be different per customer, because one customer might only use 0 to 8,000 gallons, and so they pay one rate. And then somebody that uses over 10,000 gallons or 15,000 and on up are residential. So there's different amounts. So if somebody says, well, you said a revenue increase was, you know, 5%, but my bill only went up 2%, or my bill went up 10%, that's why, because it depends where you're at in the rate structure. Why did you even go for this study and to begin with? Well, you haven't looked at these since 2008. That's 10 years, 10 years without a rate increase. And a lot of time, just even when you look at inflation and what you had to do over those 10 years, you're at a point where you really need to look at increasing your rates in order to, all the things I just mentioned, operational costs, maintenance costs, and then the targeted reserve levels. So there were two options that were examined. We really had a lot more options, we just went through different scenarios, a lot of different scenarios, and said, what makes the most sense for the, for the city? And option A was 14.3 million in CIP, based on water master plan recommendations. That was the, what the master plan said, you needed to invest into your system, and that's 14.3 million a year. Option B is $5, $5 million a year in CIP. So looking at this, when we looked at the option A, and we looked at the 14.3 million, for one thing, there's no way you can cash fund that, there's a cash flow issue. So in order to even finance 14.3 million, you would have to have a 40% rate increase in 2018-19. And then you would have to have another 30% increase the next year, and then another 13%, and then another 12, and another 5. And that's just with that debt financing. We also wanted to look at the projected cash reserves. As I mentioned, you want to have, just like your own personal finances, you want to have a savings account for those emergencies that you don't know. You have a water main break, you have something happen, you didn't anticipate it, you've got a contingency reserve to go to, or you have a very wet year, and so your water sales are down. So you want to be able to do that on it, that revenue that doesn't come in, you've got some type of reserve. One of the things that we look at is, do you meet that reserve? And that reserve right now that we're going to be looking at is a target reserve of 90 days. That's three months. So not really a whole lot, I see a lot more, anywhere from 120 to 180 because of the fluctuation that can happen with water and sewer rates. But what we build in to be a little bit more conservative is a 90-day one, but it's not as conservative as if you were having 120-day or 180-day. If you do this option B, which is 5 million per year for CIP, you're looking at an increase, a revenue increase, not a rate increase, a 5.5% in 1819, in 1920, and then you go to a 5%, 5%, and then a 3% over the next few years. As you can see, it goes down as you compound those rates year after year. So with that, I will turn it over to Kevin, who will, and I'll be back up for the last part of it.
Thanks, Pat. So as Pat mentioned, we had a couple of different options that we looked at. So from this point forward, we're looking at just that $5 million CIP option. So within that $5 million CIP plan, for the residential rate structure, we came up with two different rate alternatives for you. Both of them are more conservation oriented than what you have right now. So the first option is a three-tier, three-blocks. So you currently have three blocks for your residential class now. So we're maintaining that three-tier structure, but we're revising what those thresholds are, and I'll get into that a little bit more in a minute. And then the second option that we developed for residential was a fourth tier. So this had a lifeline rate, as we like to call it. So it's a special rate for low-flow users. So the typical scenario where you have, you know, a retired person who lives alone, they don't have a lot of lawn, they're not doing a lot of irrigation, it's just for the essential services, so they would fall into that first tier as we've got it developed. And then for the non-residential and the irrigation hydrant, we're proposing a uniform rate. So it would be the same rate applying to all water uses, which is what the industry trend is right now. So then your rate structure is broken down into two components. You've got a monthly fixed charge that's assessed, and then the volume component. And there's a little bit of some competing objectives here, because you've heard us talk about conservation at this point. If you were to ask a Pat Walker, who's a former finance director, or Tina, what would their priority be from the rate structure, they would want revenue stability. If we just listened to the finance directors, we would have, 100% of the revenue would come from the monthly base charge. It's a guaranteed revenue source, they know how much revenue they're going to get in every month, that's what they would want. The flip side of it is, we were asked to look at a conservation-oriented rate structure. If you pay the same bill every month regardless of how much water you use, there is zero conservation incentive in that rate structure. So that was the balancing act that we had to try and do. So what we've got proposed is about 25% of your revenue to come from the base charge, the monthly fixed charge, and then 75% through the volume rate. So what we've got there is the proposed rate structure. So what we did was, we modified the rates for fiscal year 2018-19 based on the revenue needs, and then the rate increases that Pat showed, the 5%, 5.5%, 5.5% from 2019-20 on, that's just an across-the-board increase to what we're proposing the adjusted 18-19 rates to be. So this, we've got our two options here. So the first option that I mentioned was the three-tier structure. So right now, you've got 0 to 10,000 gallons in block one, 10 to 45, and greater than 45. And I'll show you in a, in a slide or two. Based on your customer makeup right now, you really don't have that much conservation built into your existing rate structure. So that's why we, we changed it to 0 to 8, which when we looked at your billing data, 0 to 8 accommodated your typical indoor water use during the winter period. So the water you need to do your laundry, to wash your clothes, to do your dishes, showering, that kind of thing. The, the 8 to 20 is to get into some outdoor irrigation use, some more discretionary water use, and then above 20 is that more conservation-oriented signal as opposed to the, the greater-than-45 that it is now. Option two has that lifeline rate that I mentioned. So that's the 0 to 3.5 thousand gallons a month, and then 3.5 thousand to 8, 8 to 20, and then greater than 20. And then the distinction that we've got between these two tiers, because in the lifeline option, we're giving that first block of water at a little bit lower price, that means that the rest of the tiers have to be priced that much higher to generate the same amount of revenue. So that's why you're seeing the 8 to 20 is a little bit higher under option two, and then the greater-than-20 is a little bit higher again. So as we look at the, the distribution of your customers, so right now, under your current rate structure, you've got 99% of your users fall within the first two tiers. So you've only got less than 1% of your customers are using greater than 45,000 gallons. So that's what I meant when I said you really don't have a strong conservation rate structure as a stance right now. So then under the proposed, you can see, you've still got a lot of water usage in that first tier, the, the indoor water use tier, but then we've got some more falling into the upper tier where we're sending that conservation signal there. And then we've got the same rate structure for outside city, we just have the outside city differential based on, we looked at the capital needs for inside-city customers versus the capital needs for outside-city customers, and that's what we used as the basis for, for setting the outside-city rates. And then again, we've got the same distribution there. So on the outside city, you've got even more using in the first block than you do the inside-city customers. You're at 99% right now, or in that first block. And then we've got the, the non-residential rates, so the non-residential and irrigation. So again, on the non-residential side, we've got the uniform rate currently, and we're proposing to maintain that, not at that uniform rate structure. On the irrigation side, right now, you do have a two-block, 0 to 200,000 gallons, and then over 200,000 gallons a month. So we're proposing to make that a uniform rate structure where it's all at the same rate to be consistent with industry trends. And again, the same differential inside-city versus outside-city. And then we've got some customer impacts here. So the first one is under the three-tier structure. So you can see, somebody using 3,000 gallons a month, they're going to see that 2.3% increase in their monthly bill. Once you get up to the average, about 7,000 gallons a month, you're going to see a 2.6% increase. And then at the high level, the 25,000 gallons, that's where we're starting to get into that conservation-oriented messaging, so it's an 8.7% increase. And then the same thing with the four tiers. Again, with the, with the lifeline rate in the four tiers, it's only a 0.4% increase in the bill, and then it ratchets up a little bit more as you move through the blocks. On the non-residential side, so this is the, the 20 largest customers and how they're impacted by the bills. So Pat mentioned, not everybody's going to be affected equally. We saw that on the prior slide with depending upon residential customers, how much you use, the same thing on the commercial customers. So we've got the top 20 there, and then the hydrant customers, we've got an example there, what they would pay at 250,000 gallons under the current rate structure and the proposed rate structure. And with that, I will turn it over to Pat to do some more rate comparisons for you.
Thank you, Kevin. We're throwing a lot of information at you. Does anybody have any questions so far that we need to address at this point?
I have a couple of quick questions, please. Are you saying that, that lifeline rate you referred to, did I see this correctly, that that might apply to approximately 39% of current inside-city users and 49% outside?
No, it's 82%. Let's go back to the slide.
That's outside.
Right.
That one's the inside.
That's the inside, 82% for the lifeline rates?
So you have just shy of 40% would use at the 0 to 35,000, 3,500 level.
Thank you very much. And, and just two other really quick questions. Non-residential, we decided to, you're not recommending, you're proposing uniform rate, why are we not looking at conservation tiered rates there as well?
So the, the general thinking between, involving the conservation-oriented rates for non-residential, the industry trend and the thinking is that if you're running a for-profit business, you're already trying to maximize your profits by being as efficient with your water use and all of your other expenses as you can. So you don't have that same discretionary water use availability on the non-residential side as you do on the residential.
Thank you very much. One final question. You showed us the biggest commercial users? If, in fact, yeah, they're right there. If, in fact, this council were to adopt something like this, I'm assuming the implementation is a ways out, allowing these businesses and institutions to adequately adjust their budgets?
Yes, and that's one of the things I'm going to be going over towards the end here, is the timeline and the public outreach that's going to be taking place.
Thank you very much. Are there other questions?
I have one. We kind of went directly from the 14.3 to the 5, 5 million in CIP. Just for the purposes of discussion, what, what is, what are we kind of sacrificing in that decision? I know that not increasing the rates is, is important, and, and so I'm not asking that. I'm just asking for a little more explanation of what this would address in terms of capital needs, primarily so that all of us that are laypeople will have a little bit more idea of why and what this is directed at.
That's a very good question, I'll turn it over to Tina.
Yeah. Let me pull up the proposed, the $14.3 million CIP, what that looks like and what we're able to fund with the, with the 5 million that's being proposed. And Greg, if there's other questions, you may need to address that. All right. So in looking at the CIP, which you do have this electronically, what is being proposed are the shaded blue projects. Now we have, on the far right-hand side, we have a full project cost column, and we have a priority project cost column. The full project cost column for all of the projects that are listed, no matter the color of shading, are what were recommended in the water master plan, which is the 143-so-million dollars over 10 years. The priority project cost column is what we are recommending in the $5 million per year over the next 10 years, which is $50 million in projects. The blue-shaded projects are the projects that we have identified in the recommended, or the, the recommendation in the rate increases, which are primarily renewal projects. As you scroll down through these projects, you're going to see that there is going to be some shading that is like a green, and those are primarily expansion projects, and they are not included in the $50 million or the $5 million per year CIP, as well as some additional renewal projects that are at the bottom of that list.
Oh, it's the blue.
Uh-huh, it's the blue. And only a portion of the blue, if you look at the difference between the full project cost and the priority project.
Thank you, Director.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you.
There you go. There we are.
Okay. Okay, one of the things that we're always asked to do as rate consultants is to compare what your rates are compared to your neighbors, or like-size type cities or towns. And the reason we have this slide up is because this is the hardest thing for us as a consultant to do, because it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. We do it, we show you, because that question always gets asked. But one of the things that we found by working with utilities and cities and towns across the country is that everything's a little bit different. It could be geographic location, you know, if you have, if you're a flagstaff or, and you have areas that you have to pump up to or down to or whatever, and there's a lot of different geographic issues that you have to maybe put more into your system. And the size of the treatment facilities, what type of customer base do you have? The age of the assets, how much you have to invest in them? Are they newer or the older? Regulatory sites, specific regulatory requirements, the type of water supply? And then the quality of water supply? Another thing I'd say is service levels, what type of service do you give to your customers? And everybody's a little bit different. But, so when we pull up rates for another community, we're not sure what pieces of these all are in there, and what really is the difference between yours and say, and here we're showing Prescott, Flagstaff, Bullhead City, Prescott Valley, Lake Havasu City. And we're showing those, but there's all these things that can impact that. So just take it with that in mind. But even looking at that, if you look at Kingman's current, they're at the lower end, even going to the one with the four tiers, it's 25, and the difference with the three tiers is $25.10 for a 3/4-inch meter and using 7,000 gallons. That's what we put as an average customer for comparison purposes. And as you can see, the other ones on the right side are a lot higher. So the next steps, as the mayor mentioned, the end of April through May, we're going to start, the staff is going to start doing it, we're going to be attending at the public outreach meetings to reach out. And I know that Tina and staff are going to be meeting with different groups to make sure that they understand, especially the non-residential with the large increases, you know, why, why the rate increase is there, and, and being able to answer any questions. June 21st, the utilities commission recommendation is going to be coming back to council. Then you're going to, on July 3rd, hopefully adopt notice of intent and set the public hearing date. And this is out of the statutes of Title IX, 51101, that's, that's being followed, that you have to have a notice of intent adopted and do it 60 days before the public hearing. So really, the clock really doesn't start until July 3rd. After that, you're going to have a public hearing at the council meeting on September 4th. And why is that? Well, there's other notices that have to be published, you have to do a 20-day notice in the newspaper, there's other things along the way. And then November 1st will be the effective date of the rate increases at that point. And with that, I'll turn it back if there's any other following questions and discussion.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
Can I direct it to Manager Bacon, and more to his experience, because I know that you have not been here for the past decade? So noting, I heard no rate increase for the past 10 years. And looking at this 10-year water system CIP, our city is really behind, we're really behind. In your experience, what, what's happened? How has the city been allowed to get to this point?
Thank you, Councilmember Lingenfelter, members of council, Mayor Gates. One of the things that communities understand pretty easily is that an operating budget needs revenue to support it. I can't think of the last time a city council said, yeah, we ought to add $2 million of expense to the operating budget, and not say, where's the money coming from to do that? Cities generally aren't as aware that a capital budget needs its revenue source, too. And so that's what's happened to Kingman, and that's what happens to some other cities who fail to realize that the capital budget needs a set of defined, committed revenues to support the capital needs and the investments necessary for the city to survive and prosper, just as much as it needs that revenue on the operating side to make sure that the costs on, on the operating budget are covered on an annual basis. We're talking tonight about water. During the budget presentation, staff will make a even more compelling case about sanitation, where there hasn't been anything done on revenue changes to that fund for a very long period as well. We've never been able to come to a common understanding about how much revenue it takes just to support general government things, things like fire equipment, police vehicles, all that kind of stuff, if you will. You might remember back to the January budget workshop we did, and I had a slide that had a matrix, it was like four-by-four, four-by-three, I forget right now, but it, it was all those things, and a blank in the numbers to, because we haven't generated that data yet as a government. And until we, we approach capital investment on that basis to be able to explain what the capital need is, how much we're willing to spend, and where those revenue sources are, you'll be hearing reports like you just heard from Pat and Tina for a long time.
So if I hear you right, I'm hearing you say that our water system's gotten to the point that it has today because the City of Kingman has not identified for the past decade or longer a revenue source for capital improvement projects for its water system. Is that right?
For the water system, it hasn't paid attention to what the rate and revenue needs are for the water fund for a decade, that's what you heard in the presentation. But my point is, that's not the only fund we haven't paid attention to.
Right.
And, and I named two of them, but there are probably some more I could name.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one. So I'm going to direct this to Mr. Bacon as well. A while back, you weren't here, but we were given this presentation on our underground infrastructure, our water lines. It was a very depressing presentation, and a lot of things were in red, and it was dire because our, our water mains are, have aged, and they're not in great shape anymore.
Right.
And I wonder that if we go this $5 million route, if we're going to be able to keep up with replacing and repairing? I look at this blue list, but without comparing it to those two, and, and talking to Rob, I don't really know for sure, and that's why I'm asking is, at $5 million a year, are we going to be able to make those replacements to that infrastructure in a timely enough manner that we don't end up in an emergency situation like we were last summer where the, the well went down?
Right.
Because 5 million doesn't sound like enough when it was a whole, over 100 million in repairs that were necessary.
Thank you, Councilmembers Staley, members of council, and Mayor Gates. Two really good questions, back-to-back. Regarding yours, as the presentation spoke to tonight, it's a balance between need and revenues and the rate structure to support it. And, and what you heard was a higher level of comfort on the presenter's part to be at 5 million. Those of you who have spent time talking to me know that I, I happen to be a person who believes that capital investment is important in a community, and so I'm always trying to have that number be as, as close to master plan data as, as we can get it. If, if, this is part of their If, this is part of their presentation, if you would like them to present an alternative to you that shows an intermediate position between 5 and 14, I'm sure they're more than willing to do that. And, not tonight, but coming back to show you what that would look like. But you're correct, in my view, to conclude that this rate revenue presentation suggests that over the next forecast period, we're able to address about a third of the projects addressed in the master plan. And, as I recall from the presentation, that the emphasis is on repair and maintenance as opposed to expansion.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? At the last Municipal Utilities Commission meeting, we did have this discussion, and we did talk about expansion and how eventually that brings down rates for everyone. I see that expansion really kind of took second page here. Is it a possibility that we add some expansion issues?
Sure it is.
Yeah, just get a little better balance?
Sure. You know, this is, at the risk of doing another of the... There was a time when I did fill-in-the-blank discussions that all of you have politely endured over the last four months. In my days as a budget director, a total, of the total budget, a third of it was capital improvements. And that left a lasting impression on a relatively young budget director. And so, as everybody on this panel tonight can tell you, cities over the last several decades have shrunk that number, right? So it's no longer 33, it got to 25, then it got to 20, and then all of a sudden, people wondered why we didn't have the revenues to do fill-in-the-blank, whether it's water tonight, or sanitation vehicles during the bu... Excuse me, during the budget, or you name the project. And so, I'm always a champion for bringing to the community's attention the need to invest in capital improvements as well as have a sound operating budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we have other questions?
So, you're looking for direction this evening?
I think the only question goes to Councilmember Staley's question, and that is whether you'd like to see an alternative generated that somehow splits the difference between the $5 million and the $14 million. My suspicion is that Councilmember Staley would answer that yes. But I'm not sure where the rest of the council is.
Well, I definitely would like to see more projects regarding expansion. And I personally am very much in favor of the four-tier residential rate proposal. Other comments?
Well, I mean, probably the responsible thing to do would be to look at something along the lines of what Councilmember Staley's talking about. Don't you agree?
And I saw staff heads nodding that they'd be more than happy to do that and then get back to you.
What would your professional opinion be on that?
About having an intermediate number?
Yes.
Absolutely do that.
Absolutely.
Other comments?
I have one. In this capital list, when we hit the green areas of expansion, are these in prioritized order?
Mayor, Members of Council, I think Tina presented that they were in priority order. But I think, if I can, just for council's benefit, just a couple of numbers I want to throw out at you to think about. Of the 5.5 for the rate increase, 5.5%, 2% of that is just the fund operation and maintenance. The rest of it's capital. So every million of capital you add is going to make that percentage go up. And we're not recommending one versus the other, because as a finance, past finance director myself, I agree with your city manager that you've got to look at that because of the long term. But I think a more important question that probably should come back is, yeah, we can tell you what it's going to be the rate increase for $8 million, for $10 million. But what does that mean? Does that mean that something, that you're at risk with something failing because you're not doing some type of repair replacement? And I think that's where Councilmember Staley was getting what is that? And then if we don't do that, sometimes if you don't do a repair and placement, you can't expand. So what's the correlation between the projects, and what do you get for each of those tiers? So I think that that will probably be just as important to council.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Ready to move on to item two? Discussion of the city's pavement preservation program.
Good evening. This is the item that Jack Plante's doing. And for those of you who know Jack, I'm not Jack Plante. And Jack's home meal tonight. And so, what you're going to hear from me tonight is an abbreviated presentation of the material that was in your agenda packet. Hopefully, it covers the highlights. And then, I'm going to leave you with a document we've generated to try to summarize all this, literally in the two pages. So, I'm going to try to explain the basics of pavement management, what pavement preservation is, and what the benefits are, and a little bit about where we are now and what the plan is going forward. Pavement management system is a set of defined procedures for collecting, analyzing, maintaining, and reporting pavement data to assist decision-makers in finding optimum strategies for maintaining pavements in a serviceable condition. It's intended to be an objective system, and it's intended to help decision-makers make more consistent, cost-effective decisions regarding their pavement network. It's not things like sweeping streets. It's not things like pothole repair. It is an intentional, data-driven system to focus on the city's pavement. The pavement preservation program, therefore, is intended to improve the quality and performance of pavements and minimize costs through good management practices. And the key in that is developing a numerical index called the Pavement Condition Index, or PCI. It's like we were back in school. Every street gets rated 0 to 100. Deferred maintenance is something that everybody knows about, and we just talked about in the last presentation, which is the postponement of maintenance and repair activities in order to save costs or meet budget funding levels. I would just say parenthetically, it's almost always for the latter and rarely for the former. Asphalt pavement, or as it's known in some places, asphalt cement is made up primarily of two components: aggregate, or the rock, and asphalt binder, which is the glue that holds the rock in place. Some of you are old enough to remember in the '70s and '80s, when petroleum first got to be expensive, one of the casualties in many city budgets was the pavement program because it was so intensely based on the price of oil. The key to extending pavement life is to preserve the asphalt binder, which means to stop oxidation, because oxidation causes raveling and cracking. And this is a picture of a piece of asphalt that has raveled and cracked. The primary causes of oxidation are UV rays and moisture. Can't think of any better place to be talking about UV rays and moisture than Kingman. And that's why it's a real challenge to stay on top of our pavement management practices. This is from the Federal Highway Administration, and there are two key points. The first is that preventive maintenance is typically applied to pavements in good condition, having significant remaining useful life. So the pavement management program isn't for the street that needs to be rebuilt. It's for the street that's literally a couple of years old and gets started on it. And then, secondly, that preventive maintenance is a strategy of extending the service life of the street by applying cost-effective treatments to the surface of structurally sound pavement. It's the same point again. It says, "We need to make sure the pavement's good before we try to preserve its life." Pretty sure most of you don't have core samples at your house to check out, so we brought some by way of this PowerPoint. The one on my left, the lighter-topped one, is actually from an asphalt street that was put in in 1999. See how it's grayed out? That's what the oxidation has done to it. That's the water, that's the sun beating on it. The one to my right is actually pavement core from a section of pavement that was installed four years before that, but an effective pavement management program had been in place. And you'll see that it still has that richness of a relatively new asphalt layer. How's that look from a chart standpoint? A lot of people think that the only real tool for asphalt streets is to resurface the street. But the day you resurface the street, the aging process starts. That's what that white line is. It's a natural aging curve of the asphalt. And in a lot of cities, the rehabilitation effort starts down kind of midway on that curve. See where the black lines are, about halfway through? That's typically when people start to go, "Oh, we ought to do something." The key to extending pavement life is to get started when it's only a couple of years old. That's where that kind of blue line is, or green line in the top of this graph. And so, the longer you go out, as you see that curve bending down, the higher the cost is to take care of the street. Little rule of thumb, that every dollar spent in keeping a good road good precludes spending $6 to $14 to rebuild one that has deteriorated. So with that idea in mind, the thing you're trying to do with a pavement management program is to put the right treatment on the right road at the right time. So, you don't want to wait for 15 years before you start doing something because you don't have the right time. You probably don't have the right road, either. And if you had used the right treatment, you wouldn't be looking at replacing it. In Kingman, our average PCI is now 44. Some of you remember a higher number. That's because it was an earlier presentation. The company that we use called Streetsavers, the software, has over 476,000 lane miles of pavement where they use this analytical tool. And the average PCI for similar communities is 64. That's like 50% better than our streets. So, I shared with you the curve of different treatments over time. Jack put this together to demonstrate what he calls his preservation toolbox. And there are a couple of things to note. First is, what he labels as preventive maintenance, which is crack sealing and fog sealing, starts about three to four years after the street has been resurfaced. You don't wait six, eight, 10 years. You get at it pretty quickly. And you can do it relatively inexpensively. You see his cost range is somewhere between $0.80 and $1.50. Not a bad number. If you then go out three to seven years and start looking at chip seal and liquid road slurries, things like that, your cost per square yard goes up to $2 to $5. So you see, the longer you're out over time, the more the cost goes up. Then when you get into rehabilitation, the numbers, first of all, it's longer in time, and now you're starting to do overlays, and now you're out in the $8 to $25 range. And so, that's what Jack has done to interpret the importance of starting early to preserve the streets in the city, and why doing that actually makes great economic sense. This is a graphic that I wish Jack were here to explain, and I'll invite him back to explain it in more detail. These are the streets in 2019's budget year that he plans to do. And each of the colors represents a different treatment strategy based on what I just walked through with you. And for those of you that I haven't shared this with, the recommended budget for pavement management, not the whole street department, just pavement management, will be $4.5 million. So, that's roughly five years of the preceding 10. Councilmember Lindonfelder.
I don't mean to interrupt, but that's up from an average of $800,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And also, this graph, this shows a good balance, doesn't it, of going to the very poor roads as well as trying to maintain
Yes, ma'am.
the good ones.
Correct.
It's a balancing act.
And then, this last one is, I think, really useful in not only addressing streets, but it goes to Councilmember Staley's question about water. And that's how a little difference makes a lot of difference. This shows you what our expectation is about the Pavement Condition Index if the annual investment is $4.5 million, which is the red line, if you will, versus just half a million less at 4. You see how it drops off disproportionately to the reduction in the investment? And so, when people say, "Well, I'm concerned about what happens to pavement management if we don't continue to invest $4.5 million," this is what happens, is that it drops off, and it drops off precipitously. If we were to go back to a funding level that was, let's say, $1.5 million, you would see an even sharper decline. And the reason for that is that we have, over the last decade, averaged about $850,000, $860,000 a year on pavement management when we should have been investing literally millions of dollars in that effort. And as a result of that, many of our streets are now further down that curve. Remember, I showed you easy treatments versus hard treatments? Well, a lot of our street system has now moved down into that hard treatment area. And so, it's going to cost more per lineal mile to get the kind of results we want. And I'd just like to close with that, is that I've worked in communities like Kingman before, and people have had an impression of a lot of city services, streets being one of them. One of the things that I've found in talking to people in Kingman is, a lot of them really don't appreciate how big the system is in Kingman. If we took a 12-foot-wide section of pavement, which is one lane, that's what your car drives on, okay? And we took all 434 lane miles that we have, we could build a one-lane road from the east side of the state to the west side of the state. It's a lot of road miles. And so, the system is big. It's in need of additional investment. I am appreciative that we're able to do that. There's an agenda item tonight There's an agenda item tonight that lets us make an investment this year and not wait using this year's money. On top of that will be the four and a half million that's recommended in the budget. I've asked staff, and I'm sure that your new city manager will agree, to have staff implement that pavement management program for fiscal '18, '19 as quickly as they can. This is just a very important topic. And so that's my way of closing by saying, I asked staff to put together a two-page document, which I will distribute around the day as for you to take a look at, that's called "What Is Pavement Management and Why Does It Cost So Much?" And it's all you ever wanted to know from this presentation reduced to two pages. And so I would appreciate your feedback because we'd like to put out a document similar to this for public use and information. This presentation obviously is available. Jack does a great job of generating lots of operating data. And so that's all I have tonight. The reason I wanted this on the agenda before May 10th is because we're going to talk about the budget on May 10th, and this is obviously a key part of the manager's recommended budget. With that, I'll take any questions that members might have.
Thank you. Questions?
Yes, Manager Bacon, I have a hypothetical question that I'd like to ask you.
Okay.
What happens to a city when a majority of its transportation system, the roads in its transportation system, get to a point where they are in a condition that require reconstruction? What does that city do?
I've actually worked near cities like that. Fortunately, not the ones I worked for. And the answer is that a part of the system actually is allowed to continue to degrade. And I don't know if this term makes any sense, but they essentially adopt a triage system for their street network, and they identify which streets they're going to pay attention to and which streets they're not. And I would think that over time, I've never kept in touch with them, but I would think over time, they wind up doing a lot of neighborhood-based financing of street reconstruction.
Is there a point of no return that a city could reach?
I don't know about no return, but I, and most of you have heard me say this, I think that the system in Kingman has been allowed to go on with the minimum amount of investment for so long that returning to a period of investment similar to what we had the last decade would make it very, very difficult to recover from that.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Manager Bacon, this shows us that of the almost 500,000 miles that Streetsaver monitors, that we are in the bottom quartile.
That's correct.
Among our peers. Not a good place to be.
Correct again.
So with our now improved pavement preservation program, does Mr. Plauti have any estimates on how fast we can move up in improving that rating?
Surprisingly slowly because of what I said earlier, that if the system were relatively new to underinvestment, then it could recover pretty quickly. But the length of time means that it's going to take a really long time to get it back. I told you about four and a half million dollars, and I'm very pleased to report that number. It's a very significant investment in our community. If we did that number each year for the next decade, that 44 number would still be less than 54, might be less than 50. So it goes very slowly. And the flip side, that's what this one in front of you does, backing off of that investment even slightly
Really hurts.
accelerates the amount of decline.
Thank you. Other questions?
I have a question. If we were to neglect our roads as they have been done in the past and spent approximately 800 to 900,000
Right.
in the next decade.
Right.
Is there an estimation as to how low our PCI would go?
If you did twice that, right, which is essentially the HERF money, right, million five?
Okay.
In a decade, it'd probably be under 30.
Do we know, in comparison with other agencies or cities our size, peer comparison, what percentile rank that might be? 30?
30?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it'll be low 25, which is where we are at 44.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's... I said this in jest to somebody a couple of weeks ago, and I don't think they appreciated it. Maybe you will. We'll find out in about a minute here. You know, asphalt doesn't care where it's laid, doesn't care what the demographics are, the people who live in the houses that it passes, you know? It just does what it's supposed to do, which is bind the street and hope that somebody takes care of it. You know, and so it doesn't matter, frankly, whether you're talking about pavement preservation in a wealthy city, a poor city, a medium-sized city, a big city, the asphalt is the same. It just is not very concerned about the community it's being applied in or the neighborhood that's, you know, that received it that particular year. And so one of the things that I've come to believe over the years is that people pay more attention than they ought to the demographics of the community when it comes to street pavement management and less to the basic financial need. All of you in January assessed streets as a need area in the budget. You know, there are some other areas you identified as needs. Those can be taken care of with a combination of financial resources and human resources. This, streets, is about financial resources. It's pretty straightforward, you know? It's something you really can't talk your way around. It always comes back real quickly to what I just said. Any other questions?
I have one more. I have two more. One A and one B. When you first came here, you commented to me that you thought that the biggest, most critical issue that our city was facing were the condition of our roads.
Yep, I did.
Do you still feel that way?
Absolutely.
And by your presentation tonight, are you suggesting that we have to invest at least four and a half million, somewhere around there, into our roads every single year? Because if we don't, if we go back to historical funding, our roads will fall apart.
I'm suggesting if you go to historical funding, you're right.
Okay.
There's no question about that. I'm suggesting further that if there's a pause in the investment, okay, or a conscious decision to reduce that investment, you're in the same place as if you had not made the decision to increase the investment. And the other thing that Councilmember Staley probably remembers from that conversation is the point I just made about demographics, which is that communities in a lot of places in Arizona spend and have spent a lot more to take care of their local streets than the city has historically. And that's not a criticism, that's just a fact of what's happened in this city for the last decade. And so I appreciate having had the chance to be your interim manager during a time when this council recognized the need to substantially increase the investment in its local streets generally and in its pavement management program particularly. The city's street program, not just pavement management, the whole street, you know, like sweeping and pothole repair and that, that's a lot bigger number than four and a half. And there are people in the community that always get in a conversation with me about pavement management, because I always talk about four and a half or four or 860 or one of those numbers. And they want to tell me about the whole street budget. And I go, no, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm just talking about the pavement management piece, the part where you put those tools that Jack identified in play and in place. And so, yeah, I haven't changed my mind a bit about that. And a footnote, that's an operating expense we're talking about. These are not capital items, these are operating items. And that's the other thing I would say, and try to wrap this up probably, is that I was asked earlier about my experience in other cities. A lot of cities make the mistake of trying to capitalize these costs. You know, like, hey, we have a $4 million capital budget. No, you don't. You've got a $4 million operating expense miscategorized as a capital budget item. This is absolutely unequivocally an operating expense. It'll show that way when you see the budget in two weeks.
Good. Thank you. Other questions?
Manager Bacon?
Yes, sir.
If you would please, for the public's sake, advance the presentation three slides further forward to a slide which you have not yet gotten to. That's the historic funding slide. It presents very much reflects how we got to where we are. It shows revenue that used to be received from the state and funding for our streets, money from our HERF monies, and how that, in the boom period, we received that up through '07, '08, and then we just went off a cliff down to zero funding.
Yep.
And why the half-cent TPT increase really needs to stay in place in order to fund our streets.
Yeah, I didn't put that slide on my abbreviated presentation because I have shared that with you before, and it's available on the city's website. But you did a great job. Councilmember Yocum was summarizing what that slide says. And there's my technical assistants. Thank you. Yeah, no, exactly. So if we figure out how to make that project on here, we're good. I am more than happy to do that, sir.
Thank you.
Is it, are you seeing this slide?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so what Councilmember Yocum has is a slide from the complete presentation, and it shows exactly what he said, excepting that there's never a really good year on the revenue side. And that's a professional opinion on my part. I don't want to disparage the years that it got to a million, million-five, but it's a key feature of a good pavement management program is it's sustained through good times and bad times. You know, I was a city manager during the Great Recession. The pavement management budget stayed the same, never varied more than 10% during that whole period of time. And so thanks for bringing that slide up because it's, that's a microcosm. And so what this council has done is trade that whole investment level up and are trying to sustain it. And that's the power and that's the strength of what you're doing. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? I'm going to approach the dais, and I'm going to hand out a little two-page infographic that we're working on that tries to distill all of the things I just said into a front and back of an eight and a half by 11. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Moving on to item three, update on the I-11 East Kingman Connection Project.
Thank you, Mayor Gates, members of council. Couple of weeks ago, we were talking about Kingman Crossing, and I said that the staff would approach Rancho Santa Fe the same way that we did Kingman Crossing, which is that we would look at the scope of work and then re-cost the adjusted scope. We have done that, and as you can tell by the heading of this item, which is an update on the I-11 East Kingman Connection Project, staff sees these two the same way that the council adopted by resolution its intent to treat the two interchanges as one project. So I guess I'd ask you to think about this as the second half of the report on scoping rather than as a separate entity. Greg is here tonight to walk you through a brief presentation, but I could just, and we put a map out at your desks to try to help gain an appreciation for this. Essentially, what staff has done is identified the Santa Rosa Road construction as a project that doesn't need to go forward at this time and to slightly modify the Parkway's cross-section. And then the third is to have the community connection, if you will, to Santa Rosa, or I'm sorry, to the Parkway at Airway, and to do that on a more limited cross-section. When you do all those things, the project for Rancho Santa Fe, the interchange plus those connector streets, is $48,437,000. And so that's the summary of what Greg's going to present, but he's going to do a heck of a lot better job than I did. Greg, go on.
Well, I will try, but I'm not sure that, you know, I can add a whole lot more to that. Jim has given the summary. What we have done is we've been in contact with AECOM. And just to give a brief reminder that back when Rancho Santa Fe Parkway and Traffic Interchange was being considered by ADOT in 2006, 2007, URS Corporation was the engineering firm that was working for ADOT at that time. URS was acquired by AECOM sometime in 2014, and we were fortunate enough that the same people that were with URS back in 2006, 2007 came, and they're with AECOM today. So we asked them to update the cost estimates for the project, not only update the cost estimates, but to break them down into segments, into five unique, separate segments, and also look at the scope of whether the full lanes that were shown in the original design concept report and the original change of access report would necessarily be needed today. So some are, some aren't, and I plan to get into the details on that here. And as Jim said, hopefully you all have this map. This is the same map that's attached in the Nova system. We just printed it out because we thought it sometimes is easier to see the whole overall picture instead of looking on the computer screen. So when AECOM provided these, they did give a caveat that the original design concept and the original change of access that were approved by ADOT, ADOT has not reviewed the reduction in scoping at this point. We're confident that when they do review it, they'll be okay with it, but when AECOM gave me the numbers, they did want to provide that caveat. So I will mention that here. And then, so moving into the five segments, segment one is the construction of Rancho Parkway from Louise Avenue to Interstate 40. So basically, the segment south of I-40 that connects to Louise, to the arterial connection. The original DCR called for an ultimate four-lane section there. We don't see that as being reduced in the scope that we asked AECOM to look at, and they have updated the cost, and the cost has been updated to $2,018. So the cost for that segment is about 1.7 million, and that is a construction dollars only. dollars only. Segment two was the traffic interchange and the ramps and the improvements within the ADOT right-of-way. No reduction in scope on that, the, the cost for that's been updated to 21,649,000. And segment three is the construction of Rancho Parkway from I-40 to Santa Rosa Drive. Santa Rosa Drive was the first arterial connection that was identified in that design concept report from 2007, that's why we had it broken out to that point. The recommendation is, originally that was a six-lane, the recommendation is now to construct that to an ultimate four-lane section, and the cost is just over $2 million for that segment. Segment four is the, is the roadway from Santa Rosa Drive to Airway Avenue. That was originally a four-lane road in the, in the original design concept. Proposal would be to construct it as an interim two-lane section, widen it later as needed as development, surrounding development dictates. And the cost for the two-lane section is 4.3 million. And segment five is the final segment from Airway Avenue to Industrial Boulevard, essentially the connection to the airport park. And that has always been shown as a construct, a two, interim two, two-lane section, and it gets widened later as development dictates. The cost for that, and the reason the cost is high is it's, it's, it's the longest segment in there. It's about 6.7 million for construction for that segment. In addition to the Parkway itself, we, we looked at the extension of Airway Avenue between Prospector Street and the Rancho Parkway. We feel that is a critical part of the project. When the interchange goes in, that that segment needs to be constructed, that traffic will, will certainly use it. We looked at constructing an interim two-lane section, the construction cost for that is $3 million. This slide just shows how, you know, Jim has mentioned the total, the total price at this point is about 48.4 million. We've included some design cost in there, as well as some ADOT cost and right-of-way acquisition cost to come up with that number. And that is essentially the update on the, the costs and the scoping and the segments. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
I have some questions. The 1.5 million dollars that's indicated for right-of-way acquisition, Greg, does that take into account the letters that we all received recently from the property owners indicating that they would be willing to donate property along the alignment?
It, it does, in a sense, but, but the letters that, that, that I've seen are, are non-binding letters, they're, they're an indication that they'll work with the city at the time. And yeah, certainly we would hope that they would all dedicate the necessary right-of-way at the time, but I, until we have something more binding, I like to be conservative on that and say-
Yeah.
-we think we're going to need some money for right-of-way acquisition.
I agree, that's fair. And then, the Airway Avenue Design and Construction, total cost of like 3.3 million, is that an ADOT requirement, that they, that they're making us design and construct Airway Avenue? I don't understand that part.
The connection from Airway Avenue was actually originally listed as Santa Rosa Drive in the original design concept, so if we're going to abandon Santa Rosa, and I, and I know your question is, do we really need Airway? And yes, I, I think we do from the standpoint of, if the interchange is built, we know we're going to have residents from Rancho Santa Fe subdivision using that, that segment. And if we build a brand-new roadway with a little turnout that goes to a dirt road, we would anticipate certainly a lot of questions from the public on, on why that segment didn't get built, as well as potential dust issues and maintenance issues that the city would have to have with the increased traffic on that road. I do think, until we approach ADOT for the, the updated change of access, there was specific requirements on connecting as soon as available from the interchange to an arterial, an east-west arterial road. They, they were happy with Santa Rosa, I think they would be happy with Airway Avenue as well, but I would anticipate that as a requirement.
Okay, great, thank you. And then, the, the full length of Santa Fe, Rancho Santa Fe Parkway that's included here, is that just two lanes of the divided median right now, or is that two lanes each way with a divided median? That's just, that's just one lane each way with a divided median?
Yes, that's correct. From, essentially from Santa Rosa to the airport, we're talking just the center divided median with the inside lanes, with the idea that it's easier to widen on the outside later on. And in addition, if we build the two lanes now, I, I had a caveat, I think, in my write-up that we're, we're not necessarily accounting for water and sewer extensions on here, but that would leave room for water and sewer extensions as well, to have that outside, to, to go in that outside lane.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Yes.
Mr. Henry, since we anticipate that there'd be a heavy truck traffic usage on this road, I, I'm just wondering, is there any different design standard for roads that are anticipated to have that kind of heavy traffic versus just normal vehicle traffic? And does this, does this address that?
Yes, it does. The original plans that were prepared by ADOT, they had a, a geotechnical report where they actually went out and took soil borings of the, of the, of the earth out there, and then they, they take that and they correlate it and they, they, they use an estimate as to how much truck traffic, and they come up with a pavement design based on that traffic.
Good, good, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other questions? Do you have one?
Yeah. Does this now represent the scope of work, the quote-unquote official scope of work and any official cost estimate?
Subject to having ADOT confirm what we believe they will confirm, which is that they will still want an arterial connection, that airport is acceptable as an arterial, arterial connection, then the answer to that would be yes.
So, we can stop talking about 130 million dollars?
Stop talking about 160 million, 130 million, 110 million, 85 million. It's, it would be this 48-4 plus, as I reported two weeks ago, the 2.1 million on, what you call it?
Thank you, sir.
That street. That street also known as Kingman Crossing Boulevard, for those of you who are way ahead of the city manager on that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for the presentation. Moving on to item four, capital project financing options.
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, just to finish the point on Councilmember Lingefelder's question, that would mean that the staff opinion, subject to caveat that I just made, for the I-11 project is 50.5 million dollars cost to the city, comprising the 48-4 that you just heard from Greg, and 2.1, which is a good segue into the item four. And I, it's really, there's no presentation, as you could tell when you saw your packet, and there, there's a reason for that, because I just, I just wanted to make some comments about how capital projects are financed. I made comments earlier unexpectedly about it, but the reason I put this on the agenda is, I, it's been my experience generally, and particularly here in Kingman, that people get focused on one particular source of financing for, for capital projects, you know, and it, everybody has their own favorite, but there's a source. That's just not how capital projects get financed. They get financed with general fund revenue for sure, or dedicated revenues in some cases, but they also get financed with special assessment revenues, they get financed with community facilities districts or CFDs, they get financed with private property donations, they get financed, as we saw in the case of the hospital two weeks ago, with offers to participate. I mean, there's just a whole host of ways to finance capital projects. And so, really, item four I put on, to kind of put that in perspective in the two or three weeks I've got left as your interim city manager, you know, I, I'm reminded of how life was when I got in the city management business regarding how to finance water and wastewater, especially wastewater projects, and at the time, they were all done with property taxes. That's how people did it, because the, the assumption was that a sanitary sewer system benefited the private property, and therefore, they should pay for that. And that gave way stubbornly, but unmistakably, unmistakably to the view that users should pay for those services, and now we have rate studies for water and rate studies for wastewater, and nobody talks about financing either of those from a property tax. And what I would hope happens in the next few months and years, for that matter, is that with respect to capital, there becomes an acknowledgement that capital needs its own revenue source, as I said before, that people recognize that there are a lot of sources that you can draw from to finance that, and that the questions that matter on capital aren't about whether we do capital, but how we do the financing of the capital. And there are lots and lots of ways to finance a capital project, but as the presentations tonight have hopefully demonstrated, the needs for investing in capital in a community are really critically important. That's what I wanted to do with item four, now you know why there wasn't a presentation other than what I had to say. Item five, which is on, and I apologize for jumping right to it, I'm mindful of the time, is to revisit two topics you last visited in January. And I was asked what the council's opinion was on these two topics, and I said, I don't know, but I will be glad to put it on the agenda and see, for those of you like myself who find that so many things happening that you can't immediately recall what happened at the end of January. The council did have conversation about both of these items, said both of them were interesting, but something that you didn't want to pursue at that time. And so, I don't know if this is the time, or you've changed your mind about whether you want to pursue them at, at all. I, I put it on to see what sense of direction the council had regarding each of these two topics. Tina has a presentation that she could give, but I think you all have it pretty well committed to memory, and, and she's perfectly content staying in the audience and not having to give it. So, with that, Madam Mayor, I will turn it over to you and, and members of the council to have a discussion about what, if anything, you want to do on either the big-ticket option and/or the supermajority.
I think about three months ago, council said they weren't interested in pursuing either at that time, so I guess we're here to find out. Obviously, something's changed, that someone wanted this back on the agenda. Questions, comments?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. So, yeah, when we talked about, I thought, my, my own personal thoughts were that it maybe have been a little premature when we last talked about it. We just gave our city manager and city attorney the authority to go out and, and at least do a draft of a development agreement. And, and these two things, you know, the supermajority requirement, we've said that there's a half-cent that needs to be invested in our pavement preservation, and we've said that there's a half-cent that needs to be invested into our community improvement plan. And, at least to me, that's a, that's a promise. And so, if a future council wants to change where those revenues go, I think it's entirely fair to require a supermajority vote on that. The other thing about the big ticket, you know, I'm willing to, to talk about that and maybe even adopt that, too. It's a little bit of a, and I'm always, you know, it's a little bit of a revenue loss for the city, but if it helps the car dealers and the, the retailers that have those large big-ticket items, then I'm, I think it's, it's something that we should probably consider. The reason that I've changed is, you know, there's a TPT initiative out there right now, and, you know, these, these are the things that I'm willing to personally use to, to try to meet their expectations, or at least what I think their expectations are. But after that, I think there has to be a limit, so that's, I'd like to see it move forward and have presentations and votes.
Other questions or comments?
I'd just like to make a comment, Madam Mayor, and it has to do with the supermajority. A citizen brought this recommendation to me, and I completely agree that if we're talking about increasing the taxes for our citizens, it should be a unanimous vote, not even supermajority, but unanimous, when we're taking money away from our citizens.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment. I've thought about the, these two issues also, and I've talked to a lot of people that are impacted by the big ticket, and I, too, am willing to consider adopting a big-ticket rate, realizing that it is a loss in revenue, and so, I think we have to be judicious in setting the level at which a different rate would apply, so that there's still parity for most of the small business owners in the city. But I do think it is part of a retention and attraction strategy, and so, I would be willing to consider that. And with respect to supermajority, I, I still believe that we have a precedent for supermajority that is a five-person vote, and I would be comfortable, I would certainly be comfortable accepting or adopting something of that nature for a supermajority, because I, too, feel like we all want the funds that we have dedicated to pavement preservation and to the community improvement to stay dedicated to those. And I can't really imagine a council coming in and, unless there was some really compelling reason, having six votes to change that, because it's such a dire need in both of those categories to have revenue.
I, I have a question on that, because I've just heard this new, these new words out just tonight. We started this discussion three or four months ago, we were talking about capital improvements, then it was interchanges, and now we're at community improvements. So, I'm not sure what we're talking about.
Okay, so, your interim city manager's a traditional guy, so we have capital improvements, not community improvements, it's the same set of monies.
I, I'd like to do, I like that term, I, I just adopted it.
Well, you know where I got it from, was our adopted budget. If you open up our adopted budget-
No, I'm aware of that.
-it says community improvements plan fiscal year 18 through 2022.
So, that's my polite way of saying-
It is capital improvements.
-the recommended budget won't say the word community improvements, it'll say capital improvements. And that's how I interpret the second half percent that we've been talking about around the table tonight.
I think it's important that the community realize that that, those funds are going to benefit the community in, in many ways, and not just infrastructure, but in other ways that could truly increase quality of life.
By, by the way, since we're doing nomenclature, the staff refers to the first half percent of this as pavement management. So, we've got, you know, the, the, the one percent is divided into two. Half a percent is pavement management, and the second half is capital improvements.
Other questions or comments? City manager, do you feel you have adequate direction?
What I heard is that you would like to see a draft of both TPT, big-ticket, and supermajority at six, for any change I've currently adopted. I'm not sure about Councilmember Kress's suggestion about applying unanimous vote to any future rate increases.
Could we look at a comparison? I know that's done in other communities, the unanimous vote.
Yeah, sure, we, that'd be fair.
Thank you.
I would prefer the supermajority from my vote to be five, which is what it is for most of our decisions.
And I agree with that, five. I'm not going to vote.
Anything else?
We're good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Entertained motion to adjourn the work session.
Is that moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Let's go ahead and call this regular meeting of the common council to order at 7:00 PM. No need for- to order at 7:00 PM. No need for roll call. The invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Peter Ernst of Family Bible Church. Please stand for the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Shall we pray? Father God, we thank you for the opportunity of being here tonight in this free land, and we know that liberty is not free. It costs a great deal to those that have gone before us. We stand on their shoulders, and we say thank you for those that serve our country in many, many forms. So tonight, we want to say thank you for our city council, for those that serve us in this community, those that work in our police department and fire departments, those that serve in many, many other areas of the city of Kingman. We thank you for our great people, for the churches and this community that, Lord, is such a special place here in Arizona. Thank you for the liberties that you've given to us. We pray now, Lord, for wisdom for this council. We pray for agreement, for the power of agreement, and we pray, Lord, that the decisions that are made here tonight would be for the betterment of everyone here that lives in this community. And we now pray this in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38431-03A3 to discuss any agenda item. Following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. First item of business is approval of minutes. We have a series of six different sets of minutes. If everyone has had the opportunity to read through them, unless there's any changes, corrections, or additions, I would like to entertain a motion to approve all six sets of minutes at once.
I move that we adopt or accept all six sets of minutes.
Second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to item two, appointments. Appointments to the Parks, Aquatics, Recreation, and Golf Commission. There are two vacancies at this time on the Parks, Aquatics, Recreation, and Golf Commissions. Four applicants have been, four applications have been received for the commission. John Angelson, Sidney Bailey, Lee Holloway, and Jeremy Palmer. Staff recommends that council select two applicants to be appointed to the commission. Are any of the applicants in the audience this evening and wish to address the council? Sir?
Good evening, council. My name's John Angelson. I live at 3421 Isadora Avenue. My wife and I have lived in Kingman for four years now. I put my name in for the commission because I feel that for the city of Kingman to move forward, it's imperative that we have things that appeal to people when they come and visit, not only new residents, but new businesses as well. And I feel that, while I feel it's very important, it's, I'm retired, so I have some time to spend at the golf course, luckily. And I want you to know that that's one of the first things my wife and I looked at when we moved here, was do they have a golf course? And so I, I think we're probably not the only ones that focus on things like that. We have a swimming pool, swimming program, we have a good, I think we have a good parks and recreation program. It appears to me from what I've read, trips being made by people and, and opportunities. And I know we have a lot of parks, and my wife and I have taken advantage of some of that at times. So anyway, I would like to throw my hat in the ring, and if you choose me, fine. If you don't, that's okay. I'll go play golf. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant, sir?
I do have a question. Are you a member of the golf course?
Yes, I am. We are, my wife and I both.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for your willingness to volunteer your time. It's appreciated. Thank you. There was another applicant? Yes, kindly approach.
Good evening. My name is Sidney Bailey. I have been on the Parks and Recs Commission in various stages throughout the past 25 years. I find that combining the golf course, the golf committee and the Parks and Recs Commission was a valid idea. I believe that too many meetings were being canceled because of the lack of quorum, and hopefully the quorum can now be productive and meet and view the ideas that are necessary. My daughter grew up through Parks and Recs. She attended the Fun Days. I volunteered with Parade and through the Fall Festival. My daughter was on the first youth advisory commission. My husband and I had volunteered to take them to Tucson and Phoenix for two consecutive years for the League of City and Councils meeting. I believe that the youth and activities in this area are very important, not only to the youth, but to adults. We need to have things for them to do. My biggest pet peeve I want to say is that when I hear people say, "There's nothing for the youth to do," I say, "Have you contacted Parks and Recs?" "Well, what is there?" I says, "What is there not?" You have soccer, you have softball, you have lid league, you have movies, you have festivals, Santa, Breakfast with Santa, Breakfast with the Easter Bunny. The reason why there's nothing for them to do is because I don't research. And I don't think it's because the Parks and Recreation Commission fails to promote it. I think people just want to find an excuse. And so whenever I hear that, I always want to educate them to make sure that the city of Kingman is being promoted in the right way, that the people of the community can have something to do to make this a valuable place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions of the applicant? You said you've served on this commission before?
Parks and Recs Commission, yes, for, on and off for the last 25 years. It's something I'm very passionate about.
It shows. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Or either of the other two, thank you. Other two applicants in the audience this evening, please approach.
Good evening. My name's Jeremy Palmer, mayor council. Thank you for this opportunity. My preferred form of recreation is actually cycling. I'm a trailhead advocate in the area, and I'd like to, you know, as I see it, I think Parks and Rec could do more to represent a wider cross-section of recreation in the area, especially tapping into tourism. You know, we have, we have a lot of people that travel to the area for our recreation. So kind of looking into that facet of the Parks and Rec organization. I have two daughters that are involved with Parks and Rec programs. And then I also bring 10 years of experience planning and designing parks in public open space, from public and private sector, and doing that in everywhere from Phoenix to Buckeye to Davis Camp down in Bullhead City. So I'd like to kind of package all that, that experience up with working in the public sector. It's all about solutions and public service, and I look forward to the opportunity to serve the city of Kingman. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? I just want to say, I read your application. It's most impressive, and I know we've had conversation in the, in the past, and I really appreciate some of these innovative ideas you're, you're bringing to our community.
Thank you. Anytime.
Sure. Other questions? Thank you very much. Was Mr. Holloway able to join us this evening? No, everyone had a chance to review his application as well. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Mr. Holloway is a coach with the Kingman Academy, and they are at a softball tournament in Bullhead this evening.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah, I looked over his application as well. Okay. Any other questions? Or I will entertain a motion. We're looking to fill two positions on the Parks, Aquatics, Recreation, and Golf Commission.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Jeremy Palmer to Parks, to the Park Commission.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second that. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we have one additional vacancy. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Sidney Bailey to the other open position on this commission.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all so much for your willingness to serve the city. We appreciate Okay, item B, appointments to the Water Sustainability Committee. At the April 3, 2018, regular meeting, the Water Sustainability Committee was created by order of the mayor and common council by resolution number 5141. City engineer Greg Henry, city public works director Rob Owen, Mojave County Development Services Director Tim Walsh, Mojave County Flood Plane Program Manager Shannon Summers, and Mojave County Contract Engineer Nick Haunt are being recommended for appointment to this committee. Staff recommends appointments of these five individuals. Is there anyone else this council wishes to consider for this committee? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments as recommended by staff.
I'll, I'll make a motion to recommend the appointed, the recommended individuals, the five individuals.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I guess I did have one quick comment. It'll be next month, we'll be looking to add two civilians to this commission?
I would hope that's the case, but I defer to the city clerk.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, we'll take yes. All right, item three, awards recognition. We have a proclamation this evening in honor of Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this day, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify, beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And now therefore I, Monica Gates, mayor of the city of Kingman, Arizona, do hereby proclaim April 28, 2018, as Arbor Day in the city of Kingman, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Is anyone on staff accepting this proclamation?
I can do that.
I can, I can put it on your desk in the morning.
Okay, good.
And item B, we have recognition of Lee Williams High School Marshall Brennan Club. At this time, I would like to call, we have a plaque, a certificate of recognition. I would like to call Carolina Zuplinska up to the podium, and if she, she would give us a brief summary of what her organization is, what they're all about, and their incredible accomplishments of late, and then we'll make a presentation of this certificate to your group.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council. I'm going to invite my colleague Nathan Best to the podium with me, just to help me out a little here. He has a little bit more knowledge about the background of the program. I'll get us started, though. The Lee Williams Constitutional Literacy Project is a program that was started by a university back east in DC. Basically, the main point of it was to get law students into high school classrooms to teach high schoolers their constitutional rights. What a concept. As a public defender and a former public defender, we thought, you know, that's, that's a good idea. High school students should know their constitutional rights, and they should know about the very foundational law of this nation. So we got together initially thinking we were going to start this as a traditional moot court program, and then Nathan told me all about Marshall Brennan, and I just thought, that's a fantastic idea. So we presented the idea to Lee Williams High School, who happens to have a dual-credit advanced civics class, and it fit right in. And the program just took off. Nathan, why don't you talk a little bit about what we had to do to make this program take off?
Well, to be a recognized chapter, the first thing we had to do is come up with some money, because like all good things, nothing in life is free. So we did some fundraising, got some money together, paid our chapter fees. But to do, just to be a recognized chapter, we had to partner with the high school. We chose Lee Williams High School because it's close in proximity to our office, which made it easy for us to get to and from the school. We also had to reach out to the American University, Washington College of Law in Washington, DC, who heads up the Marshall Brennan Program. We met with the chapter director, or I'm sorry, the program director in Washington, DC, and pitched an idea to her. Traditionally, as Ms. Chuplinska had mentioned, this program is run through law schools. We were the first attorneys that created a chapter, is an attorney-run chapter versus a law school-run chapter. However, they did ask us to partner with the law school, so we partnered with a private law school in the Phoenix area, and we do have a loose affiliation with that law school. But this was our first year establishing the program again at Lee Williams High School, and we, we taught in the classroom once per month where in a dual civics class, we taught constitutional law concepts to the students. And then we created a club that met once a week on Friday mornings, which most of you know, students have Fridays off, so they're coming in on their day off to participate in this program. We were able to raise enough funds to get to Washington, DC for an annual competition. This year, we sent four students to that competition. There were 75 students at that competition. It was 19 different law schools that were sponsoring this competition, including Yale Law School, Rutgers, Arizona State University, all of them fielded teams in this competition. Out of a field of 75 students, we had two of those students advance to the semifinal round of 20 students. One student went on to the final round of four students and won the entire competition. So it was quite the achievement for our first year in getting this up and running. We're very proud of our students for all the efforts that they put in. And Cheryl Massey, who worked with us at Lee Williams High School, is one of the teachers and coaches. And also retired Judge Steve Kahn came on into the program and offered to assist us in coaching the team, and he showed up also at 7:30 every Friday morning, even though he was retired and did not need to be there.
He fit us into his exceedingly busy schedule, for which we will be eternally thankful because we, we couldn't have made it to DC without him. So it's, it's truly been a team effort and just an amazing, amazing run, considering it was our first year. There was a lot of growing pains. I'm sure Nathan will agree. But it's just been amazing, and the students have been amazing, and it's been an incredible journey.
We're all just so incredibly proud of what you've accomplished. I'd like to name the students that participated. Ms. Lacey Scott, Ms. Bryn Zacharson, Chase Walther, who made it to the semifinals, and River Sutton, who won for best respondent category. If we could have everyone kindly approach the podium, identify yourselves and make a presentation.
Just a question really quick. First of all, amazing, and kudos to all of you, really. That's, that's awesome. What are your goals for, for the program in the future, if I could ask? Is there, what is your vision?
That's a loaded question. You know, we started initially saying, oh, it'd be great to have a countywide moot court program, or maybe just citywide. There's obviously only two of us, and there's only so many hours in a day, and not like we're busy being a public defender and a prosecutor or anything. So right now, we're just at Lee Williams, and we teach just the, well, we're gonna have a second group starting with this new semester. So right now, the goal is to get back to Washington, DC again next year.
I do want to state that we do have a longer-term vision as well. One of the things that, that brought us to talk about this was as attorney... One of the things that brought us to talk about this was, as attorneys in rural community, I think one of the challenges is retaining attorneys in town. A lot of people, they graduate universities in the Phoenix area, for example, they come up to the Kingman or Mojave County area to get experience, they stay for a year or two, and then they go back to the bigger cities to make more money because it's greener pastures. So one of the ideas that we had was if we can get into the high school, start getting students interested in a career in law at the high school level, hopefully, some of these students, by getting hands-on legal practice, can develop those skills, get interested in a career in law, go to law school, and eventually return back to this community, and then this community will have long-term sustained success and retention of talented people in that field. So that's one of the long-term goals of implementing this program.
It's a great, it's a great goal, congratulations to you all, phenomenal job.
River?
Hello, my name is Bryn Zacharson, and I am one of the four who went to Washington, DC.
My name is River Sutton, and I am the one who won best respondent in Washington, DC.
I'm Steve Kahn, I recently lost my job because I reached the age at which I was determined to be incompetent to do my job anymore, so I had some free time on my hands, and I had 40 years of experience that I hope was of some help to the participants in the program. I really enjoyed very much working with them.
Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. First person to sign up to speak this evening is Jem Morgan.
Good evening, my name is Jem Morgan, I am a Kingman resident. I have a few words to say about the Kingman Airport Authority issue. Congratulations to everyone involved for the successful ruling by Judge Moss, but I'm still concerned about the way that they absconded the money that they are apparently going to attempt to use in an appeal. To me, it's no different than if employees knew they were going to be fired and voted to take the money from the employer before they were fired, so I have a real issue. I hope that this council will either create some form of injunction, since they no longer have access or should have access. That money belongs to nobody personally. When they took over the care of that facility, they did not donate one penny of their personal money, they did nothing to raise any of the assets or anything, it is not their money. For them to completely just, the word is escaping my brain, violate the fiduciary responsibility that they had to the residents of Kingman and to the city council for the proper use of, I'm sorry, I don't know why my brain is just completely, it's unacceptable what they've done. They did not have a right to vote for their personal, the attorney fees are their personal attorney fees. They, I just am really holding this council accountable for that money still, because they have at least $250,000 for the appeal that they voted two days before the hearing because they knew that they were gonna lose. So I just, they just didn't have a right to abscond those funds, and please, follow up and get some form of injunction so that we can get that money back. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Robinson? I want to say McCord.
I know.
Okay.
But because I'm running for state representative, I have to use my legal name all the time now, so. Mayor and council, I too am here to speak on behalf of the KAA issue. You know, a year ago, I came forward, and I haven't had very many nice things to say in the past year to the council about the way we were addressing the airport authority. I attended lots of meetings, the work sessions, very frustrated with the process, but I'm gonna take tonight to say thank you for doing the right thing and listening to the citizens in your community and pushing the airport authority, and even though it's cost some money, I think the outcome is gonna be the outcome we need for the city, for the airport, the industrial park, to make it really be what the city needs it to be and wants it to be in the citizens. So I'm here tonight to say thank you.
Thank you. Siri Tabbert?
Hello, Siri Tabbert, Kingman resident, Transit Advisory Commissioner. I want to thank you for preserving the call to the public on our agenda, and I also want to thank you for the joint council and commission workshop that was held in February, it was very useful. I wanted to just talk to you a little bit about the voting procedure at one of the commission meetings that I noticed. I went to the most recent Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and spoke about the fact that I see less and less parking spaces around the county courthouse building as time goes on, not less, because of this digitalization of court business, okay? So when I was talking about that, I paid attention, stayed for the vote, and it looked like the vote passed seven to zero, and this is kind of what I'm assuming, because the minutes aren't out yet. In the past six months, or possibly the past six years, all the votes for PNC have been like seven to zero, and there hasn't ever been a dissenting vote. Now, to me, that's impossible, because I've noticed on the videos, and when I go to PNC in person, that Chairman Fredrickson doesn't make an oral vote. I've also noticed that, at the time that I was listening to this vote, that I was sitting on the left side of the room, and there were three ladies commissioners there, and I didn't hear three voices for the "aye," there were no "nays." And when I went back to look at the video, I'd be hard-pressed to say that I saw Commissioner DeVries say, you know, "aye." I was paying attention to this because I recently also attended a historic preservation meeting and noticed two commissioners during the vote lower their heads and basically say nothing. And then, I haven't seen those minutes either, but I'm assuming because there were no "nay" votes, this was going to be recorded as a unanimous vote. We did have a system in place to record votes electronically, I know there's some glitches with this, but I feel that if members are to abstain, it's sometimes difficult to tell, and that the votes should be clear. I don't think all of these votes are unanimous, I think sometimes people just abstain, for whatever reason, and, or they don't have the nerve to say "nay." So I know that you go by what the commissions say, and you're trying to give more information and power to the commissions, but these votes need to be taken seriously in that regard. So 32, at minute 32 on the minute, on the video for PNC, that's where you see that vote, and you can look at it and see for yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up to address the council, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does anyone wish to remove this item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have no old business this evening, we move on to item seven under new business, pavement preservation project. The Streets Division is requesting a funds transfer in the amount of $700,000. Is that supposed to be $700,000?
Yes, ma'am.
I missed a zero.
You are.
Okay. From the TPT Pavement Preservation Fund to the Streets HERF Pavement Preservation Account. This will allow for the completion of a pavement preservation project this fiscal year to address long-deferred maintenance of city paved assets. STACK recommends approval.
Mayor, council members, staff is requesting the transfer of $700,000 from the TPT Pavement Preservation Fund to the Streets HERF Pavement Preservation Account. This was in the award of a contract, this would allow us to complete our final fiscal year 18 pavement preservation project. What we contemplate is called a NOVA bond, it's a new pavement preservation technique that City of Kingman has not utilized. Mr. Bacon had put us in touch with some of his colleagues down in the valley, and this was, this is a process that's worked well for them. It's a little bit more substantial than a chip seal, not quite as costly as a mill and overlay. The scope of the project would be Stockton Hill Road from Chicago to Andy Devine, Wallapai Mountain Road from Andy Devine to the railroad bridge deck, 300 feet north slash east of Stockton Hill Road, and three city parking lots at Public Works, fire admin, and the city complex, so I can try to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, I'm assuming if this was recommended by the city manager, he's used this before?
Yes.
And it's something that works with our climate?
Yes, I think you'll be pleased.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, does anyone in the audience wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B, appoint and approve employment agreement with new city manager. On March 20th and 21st, 2018, the city council interviewed four top candidates for the vacant city manager position, those were narrowed to two top finalists for further consideration. Following onsite visits, council gave direction to begin employment agreement negotiations with Ronald W. Foggan. Negotiations have been completed regarding compensation and terms and conditions of employment. Staff recommends appointment of Ronald W. Foggan to the position of city manager and approval of the employment agreement. I guess I just want to reiterate that we have had this reviewed by outside council.
That's correct. The employment agreement was generated by your search consultant, Chuck Rohr, and the document and the terms and language of that agreement were reviewed by Gus Rosenfeld, and that's why staff recommends approval.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments on this item? Did you have something?
Yeah, I just want to say that this is the most rigorous hiring process that I've personally been involved in, and, you know, it was very time-consuming, very thorough, and I think, I think that we made the right choice, so.
Absolutely, I definitely want to thank staff, Mr. Bacon, human resources, you really facilitated the process, as did our consultant. It's not, this isn't an easy process, and you really, really made it as clear and decisive as possible, so I think we're all in agreement on that. Okay, so if there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion to appoint and approve employment agreement with the new city manager.
Move to do so.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Maybe you want to tell us the approximate start date?
I'd really like to do that. Mr. Foggan will begin officially as your city manager on May 16th, 2018. However, once this agreement is approved by the council, my job changes, and I become the person who's responsible for helping Mr. Foggan in his transition to becoming your city manager, and that will start later tonight, when I call him to advise him of the vote, and we will be in conversation frequently over the next four or five weeks. As all members of council are aware, one of the positive provisions in this agreement is that Mr. Foggan will be here before May 16th on, I believe, at least two occasions and probably three, and so the decisions of the city government will always involve consultation with him about what his preferences are, because it's gonna be his responsibility, not mine, and so I'm looking forward to helping him with the transition, and I know that he's looking forward to being a part of the Kingman community.
The dates for which we do not yet have down for an absolute certainty, is that not right?
The dates that he will be here between now and the 16th, I don't have a complete schedule, I know, I know some of those dates, but not all of those dates.
Thank you very much, and I think we all look forward to welcoming Ronald Foggan and family to our community. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Department reports, are there any department reports this evening?
No, thank you.
Announcements by mayor, council members, and city manager?
Yeah, I'll start. Today, I attended an M-Step meeting, which stands for Mojave Substance Abuse Treatment and Education Prevention Partnership. I don't have that memorized yet, but I learned a lot of things while I was at this meeting, and this group is focused on making a positive impact on the opioid crisis that our city and our county are currently involved in, and so there's a lot of really great people on the commission, they, there's a mix of doctors, people from our county health department, and they're very dedicated to making impact, and so I would encourage everybody to attend M-Step meetings, they're gonna start having more social media posts and getting their website up and running again, and if you've watched the video that the chief had sent out from the news clip, this is a very, very serious thing that we, that we need to all start getting involved in, because this is our community, and we're all affected in one way or another, and so please, like them on Facebook, attend meetings, everyone is welcome to the meeting, and I'll start posting when the next ones will be, so that's it.
Thank you.
Yes, I just had one, I guess it's an announcement, we are making some headway with the Youth Advisory Commission. In fact, just after, as soon as this meeting closes, before we go into executive session, I plan on running outside and stopping some of those Brennan Marshall children from leaving the building, but we're making strides towards getting a quorum, and we have made some headway with respect to the yearly, the, I guess, the service project, so.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Yocum?
Okay, I will be attending the Tri-City Council meeting tomorrow in Lake Hafousue at their ASU campus, and that is something... at their ASU campus, and that is something that Chief DeVries and I will be presenting to the Tri-City Council, is that issue about the opioid epidemic in our community.
Vice Mayor Miles?
Yes. I attended the Jerry Ambrose Veterans Group meeting today at Arnold Plaza, and for the first time, I was able to actually walk through and, and see the renovation that they are doing in there, and I was very impressed at the size of the facility and at the progress they've made. They're, they're a group that's dedicated to helping rehabilitate our veterans, our homeless veterans in particular. I think it's important for people to know that they are, they're working with a continuum of care of many, many agencies that are, are coming together to serve our veterans and to get them back into our communities, working and in good health. But I did want to mention that they specifically, Pat Farrell, who is their, their champion, mentioned our drug court and the city's drug court, and really lauded the contribution that that makes to helping them succeed, rather than, you know, just putting them in incarceration. So I was very proud at that point to represent the city at that, at that meeting. Also, yesterday, I was at the CAMA meeting, and again, progress being made on the discussion between the high school, the college, and the manufacturing community on how to get the training we need to create the pathways into the good-paying jobs for our community. And the college had some exciting news, which I guess I won't preempt them. I'll let Dr. Kearns give it, but they're having kind of a mindset shift on how they're going to work with business and industry on training, and it's really exciting. So I'm very happy to see that progress. And I guess the only other thing is that I too will go to the Tri-City Council meeting tomorrow in Hafousue.
Thank you. Councilmember Lincolnfelter?
Not this evening. Thank you.
The Planning and Zoning Commission had a meeting last week. The tiny house discussion continues. There's a lot of energy and enthusiasm. Staff, I think, has plenty of work to do on that. We'll be hearing something on a change in fencing materials at some point in the future, and there was an item on the agenda regarding the new courthouse expansion, and I do want to clarify that Commissioner DeVries did recuse herself from that discussion and vote.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All announcements? City manager have anything?
Other than to make sure that that two-page or front and side, backside of the pavement preservation document got circulated around to everybody so that I could get comments from it, that would be appreciated.
Would there be any opportunity to make four more copies?
There was always an opportunity to make four more copies. I viewed that as a draft and so.
I see. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
When did, when did you want to get some feedback on that?
End of the week would be great.
Okay, thank you so much. All right. Council requests for future work session agenda items and/or calendar adjustments. Anyone have anything they wish to add?
I have two.
For discussion, go ahead.
I would like to have a discussion, mostly an update about the smoke shop that's at 417 East Beale Street. Was in the paper that, that gentleman pled guilty, and we're coming towards the end of the court case, and of course, I get a lot of comments about what's going to happen in the building, and will we put it up for sale, and all those kind of things. So it'd be really great, and then maybe even the next meeting, we could just get some information out to the public about if we will, if the city will take ownership, and then what the council might want to do with that. And then the other item that I had is I would like to add M-Step to a work session. They would love to come to the council and present to us and bring us some ideas about what we could do as a council or as a city government to help in their efforts to make an impact.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on council have anything they wish to add to the calendar? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to executive session. We do have need for executive session tonight for the following items: litigation update, City of Kingman versus Kingman Airport Authority, City of Kingman and KAA versus the United States Army Corps of Engineers, and City of Kingman and AMR RP versus Heinfeld Meach. And secondly, discussion and possible action regarding amending the interim public management contract. I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Oh, well. We all back? Not taking any action as a result of executive session this evening, therefore I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, thank you.